States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dankert, would you be... Roll call, please.
Christine.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Waller.
Present.
King.
Present.
Pashusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Item number one, we need a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I propose. Item number two is motion for approving the minutes from February 19th, 2019. Motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I propose. Under... Number four, nothing under recognition and award, on number four, we need a motion for the consent agenda. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we get to public hearings. Public hearings. Number five is reviewing a tax abatement application from New Horizon Homes LLC. Craig.
Thank you, Mayor members. New Horizon Homes submitted an application for a new home at 2011 12th Avenue Northeast in the Nature's Ridge subdivision. The value of the home is $350,000. It's properly submitted in conformance with our adopted program. Recommend council approval, and this is a public hearing.
Is there anybody here to... This is a city action council. Any questions? It's kinda what we have to do. It's our abatement. Anybody in the audience? Public hearing? One, once? Place? We need a resolution for number five.
So moved.
Sir, Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passed at 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number six is a resolution reviewing a tax abatement application from Catherine F. Shipinski. Craig?
Yeah, Mayor members, again, this is a tax abatement application from Catherine Shipinski. The property is at 1302 29th Street Southwest. The estimated value of the home is $600,000. It's in conformance with our adopted program, and council action is requested to approve it. This is a public hearing.
Counsel? Is anybody here to speak on this? Is Mrs. Shipinski here? Okay. We'll get... I don't think you need to speak. This should be pretty plain. If there's nothing, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
And this is to approve or deny?
Approve.
Okay. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passed at 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number seven, under petitions and requests, is a motion setting the Board of Appeals and Equalization meeting for April 29th, 2019, at 10:00 a.m., and appointing the following citizens to the Board of Appeals and Equalization. Peggy Young, at large; Dennis Schmicky, first ward; Taggart Metgarden, second ward; and Arianna Hinks, third ward. Counsel, do you have any questions? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I propose.
Thank you. Number eight is a resolution approving budget adjustment number one, 2018 carryovers. Mr. Dankert.
First off, I could just make a mention on number seven, the item there, again, Board of Review and Equaliz... Board of Appeal and Equalization is where citizens go to appeal the valuation of their property for the 2020 year. So in 19, you'd be going there to talk about your 2020 valuation. So, again, that's the time for citizens to go visit the assessor's office at that hearing to talk about that.
I apologize for not calling on you.
That's all right.
No, we needed that. Thank you.
The budget adjustment number one has been requested by staff for... primarily for budget carryovers. Items that were approved in the 2018 budget that did not get done for one reason or another. Those budgets lapsed at the end of 18, so we need council approval to, again, allow them to buy those in 2019, and in essence, for the most part, using fund balance to pay for those. And we had it in the tax levy, for example, last year for some of these items. Didn't get spent, so now it's in the bank, in a sense, so now we're asking you to let them use that in 2019. In addition, I got an email late this afternoon from the library requesting exterior lighting to be added to the list. So on page one, the equipment carryover is now $300,789 versus $270,789. So, again, I'd request council approve this budget adjustment, as I just amended it, that would then allow staff to do those expenditures in 2019.
Counsel? Any questions? Any comments?
I just wanted to comment that I am grateful and pleased that this money was stewarded well, the taxpayer money was stewarded well last year, and that year organized and going to push it forward to next year, and we don't have any kind of crazy lose it or use it policy that would encourage irresponsible spending. So I am pleased to be taking this action. If my total is right, it's almost a million dollars, $950,000 with your library update.
Yep.
That's a lot of money. Good job.
Yep. We got the best. And we're gonna be dealing with that later. Number eight, the... Okay, so we need a resolution for number eight.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passed at 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number nine is a motion approving a stop sign request for 8th Avenue and 6th Street Southwest. Mr. Lang?
Yes, as we discussed at the work session, based on the accident history at this intersection and the controlled intersections that are in this general neighborhood, we would recommend installing stop signs on 8th Avenue at 6th Street Southwest.
Counsel? Talked about it at the work session.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a...
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember...
Just a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? I'm sorry. Number 10 is a resolution approving a proposal from WHKS for 2019 sanitary sewer INI reduction project. Mr. Lang?
Yes, also at the work session, we talked about our INI program that we completed in 2018, which is our...
INI?
Yep, INI, inflow and infiltration reduction program that we started in 2018 in the southeast quadrant. Attached for you is a proposal from WHKS to continue this program into 2019 in the fairground sector, which is in the southwest quadrant, everything from Turtle Creek to the northeast. So everything in the southwest, starting at Main and Oakland going down to Turtle Creek. That's what we call the fairground sector. Again, this is a six-year program. We're one year into it, and this proposal for 2019 would be year two of our inflow and infiltration program.
Counsel? Any comments? If not, we need a resolution for item number 10.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passed at 7-0, Your Honor.
Eleven is a resolution approving performance pay for the Director of Administrative Services. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my recommendation to increase performance pay for the Director of Administrative Services, and it's consistent with the contract, and council action is requested to approve this matter.
Counsel?
So moved the resolution.
Second. Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passed at 7-0, and thank you, Your Honor.
Well, thank you. Well deserved, Mr. Dankert. It's a pleasure doing business with you. I mean, a lot of what we talk about as far as financial shape of the city is because we listen to your advice on just about everything financial, except maybe how to spend it sometimes.
How to not spend it.
How to not spend it sometimes. But thank you for what you do, and your staff. Sometimes we have a tendency to overlook your staff, and I see 'em hard at work every day, and it's a very dedicated group you have there. Number 12 is a resolution accepting donations to the City of Austin. No brainer, we need a resolution.
So moved.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passed at 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thirteen is a motion and an ordinance declaring a snow removal and parking emergency ordinance. Steven?
Yes, over the last few weeks, we have called multiple snow emergency declarations into effect. We've been talking about this for the last few weeks. We're coming into this large snowstorm blizzard that we just had. We were talking internally, from staff standpoint, of how we're running out of room in the boulevards. Then we get that large 12-inch snowfall a little over a week ago, and really inundated our community and our ability to... for snow storage. So as we've worked closely with the... both the fire department and the police department for access and our options in some of these residential neighborhoods where, when we get vehicles parking on both sides of the streets, it makes it very difficult for snowplows to get down and also emergency vehicles. So that is why we've been continuing our snow ordinance over the last week or so, and we feel that we should have something in place to be able to extend this for the month of March as well. I could continue to call a snow ordinance every three days and achieve the same thing, but in order to be a little more efficient, we would like to bring this to council to request a 30-day parking ordinance, odd even or alternate side parking. It would be just like our snow emergency ordinance where people would park with the calendar on an odd day, park on the odd-numbered sides of the street for house numbers, and on an even day, park with the even-numbered house side of the street.
So we're in it now? We just continue it for another 30 days?
That is correct.
That's an excellent idea.
Does that include the downtown, too?
No, no, the downtown, if we had a large snow event, we would still call out a snow emergency for the downtown, that no parking between 1:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. We'd call a special snow emergency for the downtown.
And we would anticipate, hopefully, getting this canceled before the entire 30 days are up, I would assume. I mean, if we get all the work done...
Yeah, it depends on Mother Nature. Really depends on... It's not really us, you know? We're out there...
Yep.
We're not gonna be widening and blowing snow in residential neighborhoods. There's just too many of them. So that's why we're looking at the odd-even parking in the residential neighborhoods, and it really depends on Mother Nature and when it starts to warm up and bring this snowpack down a little bit.
You know, I haven't got a single phone call from a citizen on anything but good stuff about what your crews are doing, so...
Thank you.
They called us.
I mean, come...
Yeah, you can. It's not a public hearing. Stand... If you do, you gotta come up, go to the podium, and tell us who you are. Take your hat off.
Losing my hair.
Yeah, that's all right.
Jack Wilson. I live about three blocks down the street. I talked to Mr. Lang today, and I talked to Ms. Pashusta. We have been informed that we have to put our garbage, us people with alleys, in the front. Problem is, we don't have end drives in the front. All we have is a boulevard, and there is parking in front of all our houses. So if we put a garbage can out there, the garbage truck isn't gonna be able to pick it up anyway. Mr. Lang informed me, they're not widening any of the alleys. They're gonna leave 'em be, so the garbage trucks won't go down 'em. Now, not only is it a garbage truck problem, if a garbage truck can't make it through the alley, how's a fire truck or other emergency vehicle's gonna make it through the alleys?
Good point. Mr. Lang?
Mr. McCoy, do you use alleys for fire access, or are you relying on the street?
There are times when we do go down the alley, but generally, we go to the address and work from the front to the back.
And if there is a fire in a garage?
We'll drag a hand line to the back of the residence.
But you'd prefer an alley, I would assume, right? It would make it easier.
I mean, us alley people are in a pickle. If we can... I dug a place in front of my house to put my garbage can, but I've got neighbors across the street with five cars, and there's usually one of them parked in front of my house. So what you're gonna have to do then, if this is how you wanna proceed, is you're gonna have to find out the garbage haulers' routes and the days they pick up, and you're gonna have to put no parking on all the streets with alleys on the days the garbage companies pick up, or our garbage isn't gonna get picked up.
Can we make alleys a priority? And... Oh, we're not doing alleys.
Well, I think everybody's in the same boat. My street, my driveway's only big enough for my car to get out.
Has your garbage been hauled?
I don't... Haven't had to put it out. I've been gone a little bit.
Drive through my alley, there's about 10 bags of garbage sitting outside garbage cans right now in my alley.
Have you talked to your hauler? Are they...
Yeah, I talked to... I talked to the hauler twice today. One guy in Texas and one guy in South Dakota.
9th Street Southwest hasn't picked up in a week either. We lost a week's service.
I mean, I don't mind if they're gonna pick up late or anything, but if you're not gonna fix the alleys, they're not gonna pick up at all. And nobody will guarantee me that if I dig a... which I already did, dig a place in front of my house for the garbage, that there's not gonna be a car sitting in front of it.
Your garbage company... Well, if you put it there, they're not gonna park in front of your garbage can. That's common sense. If they do, then, you know, you can't prevent everything. We've had... This is the worst snow we've had in decades, and I think...
Well...
People have to understand it's not gonna be...
We were way lax on snow emergencies. We were the last town to call a snow emergency. We were behind the eight ball before the first emergency was ever called. That's why we're in the pickle we're in, I think.
I don't think so, but anyway.
I think they're still out there doing the work. Whether they call the emergency or not doesn't matter. All that affects is where people can park and how they're able to remove the snow on the streets.
Well, I live on a snow emergency route, and there's been cars parked in front of my house across the street every night.
Well, I just read in the Herald where we issued 400 citations. I think they're out there doing their job.
Well, I guess what I need to know is what do I do with my garbage?
Well, you need to work with your garbage company. We had... Half our councils had our roads done in the last year. How did you get your garbage picked up? You called your garbage company. They say, "Take it down to the end of the block." Maybe it's easiest for you guys to take it down to the end of the block? I don't know. But you need to work with your garbage company. That's who you need to work with.
If I could just interject, I spoke in... Last week, I spoke with both Waste Management. They actually called me about it first. They initiated it, not me, and they said that they cannot fit down the alleys. They are going to send out a robocall to their customers to move it out to the street side. I don't know if they did or not, but that's what they told me they were going to do. And then soon after that, Waste Management called me on a different issue, and I let them know what Waste Management was doing by moving their garbage from alleys out to the curb side, and why Waste was then planning to get information out to their customers to do the same thing.
And how you get people not to park in front of you? Here's the curb. You put your garbage can over the curb where a parked car would be. They can't park there then, and you're not gonna be as wide as a car, so people can still get around. That's what everybody else is doing. That's what I'm doing.
Well, I was told we can't put 'em, have 'em in the street at all.
Can we do that, Chief? I mean, we're not gonna be writing tickets.
We've told people that they need to notch out a spot in their boulevard for their garbage can, so that...
I'm sorry.
People need to notch out a spot in their boulevard for their garbage can. They can't be putting garbage cans out in the road where they could get hit by snowplows or vehicles.
Okay, now, I would just like to add, no parking then, when our garbage cans are out there.
We're not putting up no parking signs when your garbage cans are out there. That's ridiculous. We'll do what we can, but that's a silly request. We're not gonna have police out there. When they're busy enough right now, and they're gonna come and put no parking signs on your streets so your garbage can get picked up, the rest of the city's surviving just fine. I think you could... You'll be okay. Try it. Come back next time we have a meeting, tell us how it worked.
Well, I'll try it, but I think the priority should be for the safety of the community and emergency vehicles to be able to go through those alleys.
You're trying my patience. We've heard ya. That's enough. We're not gonna change anything for ya. It's a snow emergency where everybody's trying to adjust to it. You're not adjusting as well as most people, apparently, but we've heard your side. I'm not gonna argue with you anymore.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you letting me talk.
Thank you. And thank... It was information I wasn't aware of, and that's valuable, but at the same time, we can only do so much.
Well, what... Where I was upsetted by it a little bit was, your engineer told me they weren't widening alleys, period.
We're not widening alleys.
Right. I think the chief has something to add, too.
You know, yours is a perfect example of... I mean, I know you're using alley as an illustration. Really, our residential roads right now are all narrow. You know, to me, a roadway would take priority over an alleyway. Those are the roads that we're actually using to travel on. And although, again, I think we want our citizens to be able to park, I think we all recognize that priority one is driving, priority two is parking. And right now, we have significant snowpack within our parking areas that are pushing people further and further out. Mr. Austin, we've actually written 700 tickets since February 20th, which was our first major storm.
That's true.
We've done multiple, I mean, media after media, trying to let people understand what the problem is, trying to let people understand that, yes, your road's been plowed, but really getting everyone on the same side of the street and not having that alternate parking. You're a perfect example. We mentioned emergency vehicles. We mentioned plows. I think we've had a couple plows nick some cars. I know we had a Smart Bus nick a... knock off a mirror today. The fire chief's concerned about it. Garbage haulers are another one of those wide vehicles that I know are just having trouble navigating our city streets because we can't get people to go on one side. And if we can get them to do it, we clear six to seven feet of actual driving space on the other side. School buses are also having an issue with it. It's just an incredible amount of snow. We were... You know, we had a huge snowpack after the event on the 20th. You know, the event on the 23rd and 24th was something like I've never seen in my 21 years here. We've had no natural melt since then. The street crews are doing what they can to actually... They're at the point of having to remove snow because they pushed it as far over as they can, but you are not alone. The entire rest of the city. You go down any residential road, especially the ones within about a mile of the city center, which are kind of those older roads that are a little narrower, they are all just bottlenecked up. Just in general, folks and those garbage trucks are having trouble coming down it. And I'm sure Stephen, if he could get to the alleys, he would, but really, even getting the residential right now are a problem. And our biggest thing is, like I said, we will enforce the parking. We like to get the message across that, please, please even odd park. It makes it so much easier for everybody, but we have been enforcing, you know, 700 tickets for us. I think in the previous four winters, we've issued 90 total. We've never had something like this, but it really is something where we have a lot of concerns about the safety of those travel lanes, the ability to get a lot of these... It's not just public safety vehicles down there, and we don't see that changing until we get some 50, 60-degree weather. And certainly, you know, we get another snowstorm this weekend, it's only gonna make the problem worse, so...
Yeah, it really is. It's good to know that, because I wasn't aware of, you know, some of these issues, and we need... It's good to know it, but, you know, right now, every... Half the citizens in the city could come in and complain about something that's going on with the city on this.
I don't mind moving my garbage can out front.
Yeah.
My fear is, someone's gonna park there, and it's not gonna get emptied anyway.
It... You know, they won't. I mean, if they do, things can always happen. Hopefully, they're courteous enough not to park in front of you. They're gonna see everybody else's garbage cans. You know, if you see 'em parked there, just go out and give 'em heck, and if you see 'em parked in front of your neighbors, give 'em heck. You'll be all right. You'll be... It'll be all right. Craig?
I hope.
Just one quick thing. Essentially, what we're doing is almost what you're asking for, and maybe not quite exactly, but we are essentially putting no parking on one side of the street.
Now, my street is a snow emergency route, so there ain't supposed to be any parking on it, especially from 1:00 a.m. till 8:00 a.m.
His would be, the way I read the ordinance, and perhaps Mr. Byram have a different impression of it.[1381.11] The snow emergency routes are no parking from one o'clock in the morning till eight o'clock in the morning. No parking on any part of the street. However, I don't believe those are under the even odd. The language seems to be one to eight are designated, no parking, and every other road is even odd. So in his particular case, if he is in a one to eight zone, starting at eight AM, you could have parking on both sides of the street. It's what we see in most of the downtown and why we see cars parked on both sides of the street.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for for coming in. Appreciate it.
Can I just ask how much a citation is?
For a snow emergency, a citation is twenty-five dollars.
And how many of them get towed? Because then it goes up a little bit, like another hundred.
Oh, certainly a tow fee is is expensive. However, we use private companies. That's not something we generate or get any revenue from, nor do we set the rates. But it is it is expensive. We 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 are sympathetic to it. We try our absolute best to not have to do that. But in a lot of cases right now, we we do have to tow.
So all of those have been towed?
No. Of the seven hundred tickets we've issued, only a small portion would have been towed. Those, again, we're we're trying to ticket. We understand the hardship that that can create. We hope, along with our media work, the tickets also get folks to follow it. But there are some cases, especially where that car's in the lane of travel, that car's been plowed around, the the car is really truly on the wrong side, and there is no space. We do have to tow in those situations.
Okay, right.
Okay.
So could we just go over for everyone what is being done so the public can know about the snow emergency? Because I know it's a long list, but.
What is being done is?
To communicate to the public that there is a snow emergency.
Not really. It's.
Yeah, the majority, so majority of the information that is being put out is being done by the police department. And there, they've put out a great deal of information with their meetings that and Mr. McKeeken can go on into it more. We, when we do a snow emergency, we get it out to six or seven media outlets. They could be newspaper, TV. Ms. Cazell also posted on our Facebook page. And so so when we do a snow emergency, that's where it goes. But then Mr. McKeeken also gets out a great deal of information through his briefings that he has. So so starting with the twentieth, that was the first snow emergency. Again, it goes it goes as a snow emergency to all the media outlets. I have been checking. They had done a great job of of announcing everyone. We posted on our Facebook page. I know on the twentieth, we posted it. We posted the Times Even Odd, eight to eight. Lieutenant Mueller and Ann actually did a vlog on the twentieth that was posted about nothing but snow emergency. Friday, the twenty-second, before the major storm, again, we had several media outlets cover the event. I think that was right before Dan Conrad left. Channel Six did a big story on it. He was out in the field showing the the cars that were causing problems. This is even before the blizzard. Afterwards, we've done several media pieces. The Herald and KUS have both posted on their site. They've they've done several stories for us. I know online, there was another story again that ran today. I assume it'll be in print tomorrow. KIMT shot some video for us. Earlier in the week, Channel Six did another thing for us. And like I said, it's not only getting out what the snow emergency is, but it's covering all these various concepts on getting the streets plowed and getting people on one side. So and I think on Friday, Ann and John did another vlog. So like I said, we've really been really been hitting the media, and our media partners have really been great about covering this, getting the message out, and and the things we're hearing about, hey, my road's already been plowed. It's given us an opportunity to address it multiple times on why that may be, but we still need you to follow even odd.
And the seven hundred tickets, those people are gonna be paying attention now to. Okay. Chief McCoy, did you have any more input on it?
No.
Okay. Council?
I just have one more question. Those flip-down signs, the snow emergency signs that you flip down, is there what's the distance between signs? Is there a?
I don't know the exact measured distance. They should generally be able to be seen from the areas that are within the designated zones. So the flip-down signs are designed to be seen within our no parking overnight from one to eight zones. I'm not aware of any of them either being removed, missing, or non-functioning, but that's the purpose of those particular signs.
Thank you.
Anything further? If there's nothing further, we need a motion for preparation of the emergency ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And in B, we need an ordinance for adoption and publication of the emergency ordinance.
Move for adoption and publication of the ordinance.
Who's second by Paul?
Yep.
Mr. Dankert?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Okay. Are there any citizens here tonight that want to address the council on any issues? This is the time we get to that. We do have a work session? Yes, sir. Come on up, give us your name. You might be here for something that's on during the work session, but we can let you know. Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to make a request of a little zoning change of parking on a street or an avenue. I should say First Avenue Southwest between Main Street and First Street Southwest. Should be sandwiched by the Plunkett Building and Napa to the south. I am not sure exactly how long back that that zoning was changed years ago from all-day parking or twelve-hour, eight-hour parking to two-hour parking, I believe at the request of a Ms. Hamp. In that time that that has been in effect, I don't recall ever seeing anybody park there at all. And the reason I'm requesting it or asking you to look into it is that very soon now, the one hundred building is gonna be adding three additional stylus in my shop, which have quite large clientele's. And already, we're facing a real shortage of parking. It's my contention that if we were to rezone that to all-day parking, it would probably free up upwards of eight to ten parking spaces for those of us who work in the one hundred building area to go down there, walk a block, park all day, and not have to attend a two-hour movement.
We can't do that tonight, but we can certainly Holly, is this something that you Stephen? You know, can you can Stephen, can you contact? I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Yeah, Stephen and I have already chatted and talked. I didn't know. I I hope it's appropriate to come before the council and bring this up.
What we'd have to do, what we need to do is put it on a work session agenda.
Okay.
And, you know, we can talk to Stephen afterwards and decide if we wanna do that or not. He might come up. Maybe he came up with a very good reason not to do it. I don't know. But we can we I'll talk to Stephen. We can put it on the agenda. You'll be notified. Can we make sure he gets notified?
Okay.
And I'm sorry, what?
Sure.
What was your name again?
My I'm sorry. My name is John Shattuck.
Okay.
I'm the owner of Adam and Eve Hairstyling.
Okay, and you were and that's in the one hundred building.
Yes.
Yeah, it sounds reasonable. I mean, well, let's put it on a work session and talk about it. And if the I mean, there's some other stuff going on in that area, too, in the next year, so we might as well start looking at that now.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Just just to update you, we talked last week. We talked last week. We just haven't had a chance to pull things together and look at options for what he's requesting.
Okay. And I mean, with what we're trying to do with the Plunkett Building, is there a tie in there? I mean, it's not right next to it, but it's close enough that it could have an effect.
We'll get we'll get back to you with some information.
We might even create more parking or something there. Who knows? Okay. There's nobody else here that wants to talk to the council, then we'll go. Paul, do you have anything?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Jason?
Nothing.
Laura?
I need to pass along something that one of my constituents called to tell me, which is that the Austin streets are in better shape than Albert Lee. And I wanna commend all of our city workers. It's been not good conditions, and I think all of us are getting impatient with the weather and the continued snow, but spring will come, or so Stephen Lang tells me.
And I think people, I mean, people have adjusted wonderful when you drive around. You don't, you know, I mean, you just have people can't see you driving down the road, so you're gonna have cars pulling out in front of you. It's just, but I think people know that now. Jeff?
Yes, just want to report that Park and Rec Director interviews were concluded this last week. We're in the process of doing some background checks and reference checks on some of the candidates, and we will be meeting at the end of this week to